Good afternoon. During the declared emergency, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform, and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and in-person attendance limitations. This will be a virtual public hearing and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by their computer, a phone or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants will automatically be muted on entry, and when your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. Panel members today are Donald Taylor, Laura Alderson, Neil Palmer, and Danny Belissimo. Hi, I am Michael Clark, your panel chair. We are also asked that you mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bay, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat Peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis Peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of zoning by law that apply to the property, variances, permissions to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consents to sever properties created through lots. We have a number of those in the three o'clock agenda. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the Committee on an application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab in the event of an appeal will be sending appeal updates and notifications by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the Committee rendered here today, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local planning appeal tribunal or LPAT. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision. The hearing procedure will be as follows. We'll call each item in the order listed in the agenda. Actually, we're going to go through and see if there's any deferrals, because I believe there is at least one, to clear those people off the line. When an application is uncontested, the applicant or agent may proceed with a presentation if desired. When the Committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair should they wish to speak to the Committee. The Committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into Committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, is given a maximum of five minutes to address the Committee, and I will comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. The applicant or agent proceeds first and makes a presentation to the Committee of the application. Please note that the Committee made on entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The Committee may decide to defer the application of substantially revised to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application have been informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application when invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their submissions. And when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent is given an opportunity to rebut only those issues and answer those questions that have been raised by the other speakers. And that will then mark the end of discussion on an application. The application is then taken into Committee for a decision. Do any staff or panel members have any declarations of interest to declare for the items in the three o'clock time slot? Okay, none to declare? Okay, in that case, we can start hearing three o'clock items, and we can start off, I believe, that we have a deferral request for the last item, item number forty-two, that it has to be automatically deferred. The speaker on that application is Mr. Marshall, I believe.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Hello, this is just item number forty-two, fifty-four fifteen to fifty-four thirty-five, Dundas Street West, and fifty, Thomas Riley, RE. This was deferred from the May twentieth hearing. So, Mr. Marshall, staff advises that this has to be automatically deferred?
Yes, that is correct. This is the second deferral, and the second deferral that is due to a staff error.
Okay, maybe just want to state what, for the record, what that is?
Yes, when we were deferred from May twentieth to today, there was never an updated sign letter or updated sign produced by the Committee staff.
I see, so there was not notice of the return of the application here today?
Correct.
Okay, so we have to defer for notification?
Yes.
Were the notifications sent in the mail, or just they didn't give you the sign to post?
The notifications did go through the mail. It was just the sign posting that was not done.
Okay. Okay, Committee members, any questions, or is someone ready to weigh in with a motion of deferral? And I guess is that to a specific date, or have they given you, or is it just?
Yes, they have given, yes, the next hearing, June twenty-fourth, they've given me.
Okay, so it's a deferral to June twenty-fourth, a specific date. Okay, then we're prepared to make a motion? We're just waiting for a motion to defer the application due to the fact that the sign was not posted. Returnable for June the twenty-fourth. Can the members hear me?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm looking for a deferral to enable the posting of the notice.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor, a second for that motion. Ms. Alderson, thank you, all in favor. Okay, unanimous, the application is deferred to March, to June twenty-fourth. We'll see you then, Mr. Marshall.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the first application is item number thirty-three A, B, and C, eighteen Lamont Avenue. This is an application for consent to sever the property into two undersized residential lots. The existing dwelling would be demolished in each lot, so divided, to be redeveloped as a site of a new detached dwelling with an attached garage, requiring variances is set out in thirty-three B and thirty-three C. Thirty-three B has four variances, thirty-three C only has one variance. The lot area, we have comments from ECS. Planning is recommending refusal. And actually, I have an opening question for staff, which I've been meaning to ask in several cases, especially with ECS comments. It says in brackets "unsecured." Does that mean that they don't require, won't require to post an LC, or what does that "unsecured" mean?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's the first I've seen it on the agenda. I don't know why staff put the "unsecured" in parentheses. I don't know.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, the "unsecured" is the same as the "secured." The "secured" one just doesn't combine in Adobe Acrobat, so they are...
Okay, it's more of a computer notification issue. Okay, because I did notice that, Mr. Carvelino, also last week on several, but I forgot to ask you what it meant, but that was our last week's hearing as well. Okay, so we don't have to concern ourselves with that. So, having introduced that, planning is recommending refusal. We have urban forestry requesting denial as well. In the supplemental materials, we have, I think, about twenty support letters from various neighbors on Lamont and the street behind. And the speaker, we only have one speaker, Alfred Agipong, the agent.
Yes, sir. Afternoon. Thank you.
Okay, so I've introduced the application. I've indicated that there is a planning report that recommends refusal, so perhaps could we have a presentation from you, sir, as to why this application is worthy of support, notwithstanding community planning's report?
Sir, so I understand how the planning department is actually saying the refusal aspect of it, I could understand, but I'll introduce it by saying the lot is already two lots already. There's lot sixty-eight, and then there's lot sixty-nine pinned together as one, and we want to unpin it. So, we checked with transportation. Transportation also gave a report, which I had read. They were all in support. They were giving us the actual address to the property, because they have sewer, everything that is needed to service the new proposal that we're trying to do at the back, which will be lot one, or part one, and then part two will be the existing. We have all of that infrastructure already there, and my client just happened to wanting to move into the new property with his family. So, it's just that we don't want a future congestion of, or you can't sell, or you can't do anything like that. So, we wanted to just address everything all from the very beginning. We understand that the lot is very small, but again, within the neighborhood itself, there are smaller properties on the same area that are way even smaller than what we're getting out of the severance numbers that we have on our ballot. So, we think is good application to be supported based on how it would also add value to the neighborhood, because they will be spending almost about a million dollars in construction for the new construction that will be taking place, which I think is also good for the community itself. That's why the neighbors are also in support of it. We have everything.
Yeah.
The yard and all. The deficiencies that was actually listed for part one were things that, if you go back into the actual reports, I didn't think we should be deleting item number two and item number four, or number three of the list, because if you look at the site plan, you can tell, because I went back and forth with the zoning examiner, trying to get item number three taken up and item number two taken up, but each time it kept being stick, well, they kept giving me the same deficiency, but if you look at the calculation itself, item number two, which I think we should take it out...
Is that, are you talking about the north side lot line? I noticed on one of the variances, you only have, you have four, four variances, being obviously the lot area and the lot frontage. No, not the lot.
Right.
But, and then on the other one, you only have one variance. So, you're saying that some of the...
Right.
Which are the variances that you don't think are required? I see one is just off by point zero-three. The side yard setback of one-point-eight, where you're going one-point-seven-seven? Is that what you're talking about, or? Anyway, community planning feels that the, it's the rear lot line is a nonstarter and the lot area, so community planning is saying that they're opposed. And one of the things they mentioned, and you do have the twenty letters of approval, is that they feel this, the planner feels that if this, there's many similar properties with the same configuration, that then they would also come to sever the properties. They mentioned that in their report. They're concerned about the present, the presidential value, and their main concern is the lot air, the lot coverage and the rear yard setback. Two-point-two-three, whereas the minimum is seven-point-five, so that's, if you, you know, usually it's the last couple of paragraphs, so they're saying it represents overdevelopment of the lot. So, your position is this does not represent overdevelopment of the lot, and it's appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Which are the variants, what variants, just to, you know, so members have all the information. What is the variance that you think can be eliminated?
Okay, so I would say variance number, or part one, part one, variance two, and variance three, because if you look at the site plan, they already comply, but we still have it as a deficiency. So, I think those two can be eliminated. And then when it comes to number four, item number four, that one, yeah, we get rear yard has an issue, but we're trying to redefine it on the side yard, where we've given more set, more landscape, land space for rear yard to be conducted there. I went back and forth with the planner, and then it said how the circulation of the floor plan goes can also help to determine how you could define a rear yard. So, if you can really look at the floor plan, I had readjusted how you come out to the side yard that is bigger on the other side. Basically, you can see, that's what we're trying to do, so that side as a rear yard and not have all those, so that's what I'm saying is...
Yeah, can you talk a little louder sometime? You just, okay, that's better now. I see what you're saying here. Variance number two says the minimum required front yard setback is seven-point-five meters. You have to be seven-point-five meters away from the front lot line, and it says you were in fact seven-point-five-seven from the front lot line, so in fact, you don't need that variance, because it's more than the minimum requirement.
Then what is the...
Zero-seven, so I don't even know why this is showing here. So, that variance can be eliminated. So, we have three variants. The main ones are obviously the lot area and the rear yard setback, which planning is against.
And then item number three, item number three can also be eliminated, because if you cross-reference to the site, the actual site plan on file, you can see that it's all being complied to, but it's still being left over that we shy of one point, like about point eighteen of that, which I don't think it makes any sense for that one neither, because that one, when she placed that one on, it was for the driveway that we were trying to extend it a little bit over, but I had to ended up pushing the driveway exactly in line with the building, so it is flat, the building itself.
Can I just give you advice that I would, I would leave that, it's only off by point zero-three of a meter? So, the Committee is not going to refuse you or accept it, members, based on that variance, so I would just, in the abundance of caution, and I assume staff would agree, it's only by, if it turns off, you're, oh, even off by a few inches, you need that variance. So, why take the chance? You want us to take it out, we'll take it out, but I would leave it in if I were you. But let's see if Committee members have any questions to you on this application, primarily dealing with the planning recommendation due to the lot area and due to the rear yard setback.
Yes, please.
Okay, Committee, any questions, or is someone ready for a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if the agent could just clarify the status of the lots sixty-eight and sixty-nine. It seems that title has been merged, and I'm presuming that those lots were created in a plan of subdivision that was registered under the Registry Act as opposed to the Land Titles Act, because subdivisions registered under the Land Titles Act, titles cannot merge. So, could I just have a little bit of better understanding of how this issue came about, like historically?
Oh, historically, facts of it, I don't know exactly how it came about, but that was what the surveyor who actually did the survey for us back in two thousand and fifteen actually gave us the numbering and the pinning of everything. So, when we saw that potential, that's when we actually came up with this idea of trying to sever the lot into two, or trying to unpin the sixty-eight and sixty-nine from each other if we can.
Perhaps Mr. Carvelino can staff enlighten us on this issue about the merger of the lots and that issue? That is not the basis for planning's recommendation, but, so it's that. Mr. Carvelino, can you weigh in?
Mr. Chair, without a title search and to understand what's happened with these properties, staff has no opinion on whether or not they merged. It's something for the owner solicitor, his real estate solicitor, to determine when or if they merged.
Okay, but we can deal with the matters before us without considering making that, considering that. We just have before us a request sever with, to build two, you know, to build two dwellings on the lot so divided, and we have an opinion from community planning, and we've heard from the applicant. So, I believe we have what we need to make a decision, notwithstanding this potential issue about whether these lots merged and looking at the Planning Act. That's brothers and sisters, I guess it's clear what we have before us.
Chair, I'm sufficiently confused as to whether some of the variances requested have been eliminated or not eliminated. Has the applicant requested to remove some of the variances?
Yes, I have. I'm dealing with the zoning examiner, but very unfortunately, city staff are being shuffled around a little bit, so it's harder to get in touch with who's taking over the file. But the previous zoning examiner, yes, I have gone back with her numerous amount of times.
Mr. Palmer, if I can assist in the first part one, variance number two should be eliminated, because it doesn't show as a variance. He's point-zero-seven over what's required. And he mentions number three, and I suggested it's close enough, we should probably leave that in for its protection. And we have the one variance on part two. So, otherwise, that proposed dwelling does comply. And this was pursuant to a zoning review? Yeah, there's no other variance other than lot area on the second, on part two. So, that's what's before us.
If I could just weigh in too, as well, I'm sufficiently confused, and I also know the street.
Sorry, I just realized something.
And I just...
I just, I think something, it's kind of important that I just realized that we were, at least I wasn't aware of, the part two...
Just about to make a motion to refuse, but go ahead.
There is no, there is no construction, it appears, on part two. It's maintaining the existing dwelling, so I...
That's correct.
I didn't mention that in my opening...
That's correct.
...getting a typical situation where we have two different houses being built. So, you're, you want to make a motion to refuse?
Well, you know, I think there is some confusion about some of the variances, what's real, what's not real, and I also know the street very well, and I appreciate the fact that he is trying to maintain that house on the lot, but I don't think that jamming another house onto a lot, that lot, severing it and jamming another house on that lot is the best use of that land. So, on that basis, I would like to refuse the application.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to refuse. We have a second for that motion.
Danny, Mr. Mo.
Mr. Taylor's hand was up, so I'll take Mr. Taylor. Anything to add to that? Okay, we have a motion seconded, and all in favor. The application is refused. Thank you. Okay, unanimously. Okay, the next application is item number thirty-four A, B, and C, and again, I apologize for not realizing that the part two is going to be just to maintain, and that's why there was only one variance, although I assume you still look at the performance standard. So, item number thirty-four, this is the one we have the most people registered to speak on of the, for the day. This is again, a most, an application to consent to sever and the property into two undersized lots and to build on each, in this case, to build on each half, A being the site of a new detached dwelling with an attached garage, requiring variances is set out in parts B and C. We have a cover letter, we have an applicant's presentation, we have the ECS memo that we typically have, we have chart maps and photos. Planning is recommending refusal. They're not opposed to the severance, but they feel it would be better to have semis. We have twenty-five letters of support and seven letters of opposition. And registered to speak on this is the agent, Christian Chan, and the owner available for questions, as well as the neighbors at sixty-four, four, six, and nine Enfield, registered to speak, in addition to the letters that we have in our materials, the support and opposition letters. So, Mr. Chan?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Committee members. This is Christian Chan of C2 Planning, land use planner and agent for the applicant, Mr. Christopher Devell.
Okay, so I think we should get a presentation from you.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
You've seen the planning memo, and you, we'd like to hear why you feel that they are incorrect.
Yes, I did a detailed review of the community planning's report and have also deliberated with them. There's been extensive consultations with the applicant with community planning, and which has resulted in the revisions to the plans to reduce the number of variances. I do thank you for your note that city planning is not opposed to proposed severance of the lot, and also that they recommend that the proposal should have been a semi-detached building on the lot. However, the zoning does provide for detached residential buildings, which also forms prevailing building type in the immediate context. But I'll just jump into my planning analysis for your review and consideration, if I can be permitted an indulgence over the normally allotted five minutes because of the three applications, if I, if I go over the five minutes.
Just get started, and we'll, we'll, don't worry about, we'll see. Obviously, it's a little more complex, if you're not behind...
Yep. Thank you, sir. So, the proposal's an application for consent to sever to create two new lots. Each will have a frontage of seven-point-three-one meters and a lot area of two-seventy-eight-point-three meters. Both the lots are proposed to have the same lot dimensions. Because of the related variance applications, the applicant also secretly from seven zoning regulations, four variances from the new bylaw, and three variances from bylaw sixty-seven nineteen-seventy-nine, which is applied because of the RM eighteen exception to the site. So, I can explain the site in the media context, but I'm sure the Committee members are familiar with it, so I won't go into further detail. Instead, just go directly into the consent that's being requested. So, the requested consent to sever...
Can we get the materials? Can we get his materials up on the board while he's making his presentation, please? Thank you.
Yes, sir, and staff, if you can jump to page seven, the consent map of my materials. So, the existing home in the lot will be demolished, will require municipal readsourcing as ECS requires. We've understood that there's standard consent conditions that will be applied and request those conditions in support of city staff. So, both of the lots will be seven-point-three-one meters, lot area of two-seventy-eight-point-three. The proposed frontage will be able to accommodate two detached residential dwellings, as well as the required parking spaces for each. Just to explain a few approvals, there have been forty-six approved decisions for reduced lot frontages in the geographic neighborhood, which is outlined in the dashed red order. So, of course, as you well understand, the proposed consent has to satisfy, or sorry, must have regard to the following relevant criteria set out in fifty-one twenty-four of the Act. If you would like me to go through the relevant criteria, I can, with respect to...
You got five minutes, it's up to you. If you're gonna, don't start, I'm not gonna let you go if you start quoting, reading out from the planning act.
Of course. So, the relevant criteria, the relevant criteria, A, B, C, D, F, and G, I, and J. The most relevant one for your consideration, I'll just jump to it quickly if you review the report, is whether the plan conforms to the OP and adjacent plans of subdivision. And in our opinion, other co-app approvals for consent to sever nearby to the site on Enfield Avenue and in the geographic neighborhood have been approved, and in our opinion, the proposal respects and reinforces the existing physical character of the geographic neighborhood with respect to the lot split. So, if I, I'm gonna jump straight into the variances, if I could ask staff to go to page eight of this document for the FSI map. So, I'm gonna gloss over variance one and two, which is similar to what's being requested for the consent application with the reduced lot frontages and areas. So, the lots in the media context do contain semi-detached dwellings, have similar lot areas. There are two, four other lots in the media context that have similar lot areas to the proposal, but they contain semi-detached houses. This is the basis for, I believe, city planning's push for semi-detached. But the proposed lot areas are in line with recent Planning Act decisions with eight approvals in the neighborhood, and also there have been forty-six approved decisions for reduced lot frontages and in the geographic neighborhood with respect to the variance for, variances for either property, either proposed home. The proposed GFA and FSI is consistent with other recent COA approvals for FSI in the geographic neighborhood. Seven proposals were permitted to have higher GFAs than was currently proposed, and so the proposed GFA maintains the general intent of the bylaw and the official plan, as the overall built form of the dwellings will respect and reinforce the existing physical character. With respect to lot coverage, if I can ask staff to go to page nine. In our opinion, the proposed coverage is numerically minor, as the additional coverage on the small, on the smaller lots is proposed at still, despite the smaller lot area of only one-point-five percent more than what is permitted in the bylaw. The proposed lot coverage is also consistent with the COA decisions, and there have been thirty-seven decisions for higher lot coverages than the being proposed. With regards to the side yard setbacks, if I can point staff to page six. So, the proposed reductions in the required side yard setback of one-point-two meters for detached homes is, in our opinion, minor in line with recent COA decisions and approvals. In addition, greater side yard setbacks of zero-point-nine-one will ensure the entire subject site, so parts in one, part two, have sufficient setbacks from the existing adjacent dwellings. We can see here on this, on this map, that we did an analysis of the existing side yard We can see here on this, on this map that we did an analysis of the existing side yard setbacks that are less than what is being proposed in the geographic neighborhood. And it's clear here that the existing physical character of side yard setbacks in the local neighborhood and the geographic neighborhood are consistent with the side yard setbacks that are being proposed. So if I can direct staff to page ten for the height map. So the proposed heights, they're different for each property. For part one, it's eight point four one meters and part two, eight point six eight. This is in with respect to the changing grade between the two lots. The proposed heights maintain the intended bylaw. The heights will be consisting with the existing and COA approved heights in the neighborhood. Two stories are proposed for each dwelling.
If you can wrap up, please.
There's an additional. Yep.
Wrap it up. Thank you.
Okay, for the proposed cell, the heights are consistent with what's been approved and existing in the neighborhood and with respect to the cellar height. As we can see from the front elevations, the, the main floors grade is less than what is required in the maximum permitted main floor height in the new bylaw, one point one and one point one nine meters. So in our opinion, the four tests are met with this application. The relevant fifty-one twenty-four criteria the proposal has regard to. And there are three conditions that I recommend to be imposed by the committee should they approve the application to be substantially in accordance with the plans and the standard consent conditions and the conditions requested by ECS services and also the two conditions that have been requested by urban four three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chan. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Chan at this point? Before we hear from the neighbors. Okay, none. So let's hear from the neighbors in the order listed on my list. The first one. Yeah, this is number five. We have four, six, and nine, then we have one at sixty-four. I don't know if that's a bit far afield, but it's the first one on the list. Tina Schiavelo of sixty-four Enfield.
Oh, yes. Hello. Thank you. So I'm on the street, live on the street, and I'm aware of the proposed application and in favor for several reasons. I prefer the two detached over the suggested semi. I myself grew up in a semi and I can tell you it only caused a lot of hardship and problems with the adjacent neighbors. The existing semis in the area are falling apart. They're not well kept. You can visibly see that one neighbor's keeping up, one isn't. So I think long term it would be problematic. There's no, there's no potential of these semis ever being given a proper uplift because it would be just too costly to purchase two of them. The area is very diverse. We have from triplexes to detached. There's war homes. There's I basically on behind my home, I can see the two detached, new fairly new homes. There's lovely new families. I'm fully supportive of bringing in this kind of dwelling. Toronto is in dire need of more single family homes. We're attracting a lot of young families, which also contribute to the area in supporting the schools, in supporting transit, in supporting local local vendors. There's no infrastructure problems. We have walking distance to the go, walking distance to TTC, walking distance to many. We have wonderful parks and schools. In order to maintain those, we need to rejuvenate, rejuvenate the area, which has happened in the last ten years. So to me, I, 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 I'm fully supportive of encouraging growth and allowing for people to have the opportunity to live in such a great city. And so I see no objection to this application and, and I have talked to several neighbors who are also in favor. I, I, I'm so I just wanted to voice my support for the application. So thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, we do have typically people speaking opposition. It's obviously nice to have people speeding and speaking in support. We do have a lot of support and we had to have opposition as well. It's not strictly a numbers game. So the committee members have reviewed the letters and nice, good to hear your your position as well. Does anyone have any questions for the neighbor at sixty-four? Who's in favor? And if none, we'll move on to the next speaker, Lauren Plesko at four Enfield, which is across the street.
Yes, thank you. So my name is Lauren Plesko and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, a resident in the owners, Mark and Teresa Plesko at four Enfield Avenue. We'd like to express our.
Sorry, sir. Hold on a second. Oh, you're, you're from four. You're speaking of people at four, not on other properties, right?
Correct.
Okay, sorry.
So we'd like to express our opposition to the consent to sever and requested minor variances at five Enfield. Much of what needs to be said has already been expressed in the objection letters submitted by the Archers, Mahutsky, Spence, Thomas, and ourselves. We trust that the committee will carefully consider the concerns expressed in these letters and the quantitative scale of the seven requested variants. The purpose of the process should be to allow for dialogue to find a solution that honors the interests of all parties affected. Contrary to how the applicant has attempted to frame the issue, the letters of objection express concern not with the fact that there is a proposed development, but with the number and magnitude of the variances within the proposal. There's a way to respectfully redevelop the law without drastically modifying and degrading the streetscape. But this proposal exhibits a blatant disregard for this. When dealing with a unique street such as Enfield Avenue, citing properties that are elsewhere in the neighborhood as evidence of precedent is an attempt to divert attention from the immediate context. Yes, there's evidence of severing of fifty-foot lots to erect two detached houses in the broader neighborhood. There are cases in which it even dominates a portion of a given street. However, the fact is that on the entirety of Enfield Avenue, this precedent does not exist. The RD zoning that dominates the street largely prohibits this practice with stricter bylaws that enforce the maintenance of lot frontages of forty to fifty feet. As such, no single detached homes exist on Enfield Avenue with a frontage of the applicant's proposed twenty-five feet. The applicant's insistence that, that the precedent does exist relies exclusively on referencing properties that are not on Enfield Avenue. And it's an attempt to downplay the disruption that the proposed dwellings would have on the character of the street. The applicant's request for two undersized lots in combination with the cumulative scale of the seven requested minor variances would result in a gross overdevelopment of the lot, which is not harmonious with the, with the established streetscape. We understand that the applicant has an interest in the neighborhood, an interest in severing and redeveloping the lots. However, as residents, we also have an interest and that's an interest in preserving the character of Enfield. I also, as, as a bit of a side, a side note in response to the maps that were provided in support as part of the supporting materials. It's a gross approximation of the measurements of side yard setbacks, for example. I know that building footprints are often derived from ortho imagery, meaning that it includes the the full roof outline. So unless they're referring to actual registered plans of surveys, those measurements are not correct. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any question for Ms. Plesko before we move on to the next speaker, which is Ms. Plesko's next door neighbor? I'm not, there are three names listed. I don't know who's gonna speak from six Enfield.
Do you wish to know who's going to speak now or are you going to ask questions? Okay, may I say, do you want me to go ahead? I'm Audrey Spence Thomas from six Enfield.
Yes, welcome. Want to let us know what your concerns are?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Lauren is hard to follow, but I'll do my best. This is not easy for me. I'm not comfortable with the technology and I'm not that comfortable speaking in public, but I hope you'll bear with me. And with apologies to Mr. Taylor, I'm not a nervous person at all, so my my presentation will be on a more personal and aesthetic level. I believe that the problems that we and linear neighbors have already identified have been fully expressed in the letters we've written. And so I just want to review very quickly what those were, that the major elements that were problems for us were the seven elements of variance, the lot areas, the lot coverage, lot frontage, the side yard setbacks, the gross floor area, the maximum height, the ceiling height, and the cumulative effect of all those things. So any one by itself independently cannot be considered. So like many designated neighborhoods, Alderwood does indeed have a variety of micro neighborhoods. And there are many different forms of housing, as has been pointed out by other people. Single homes, semi-detached, two stories, bungalows, split levels, duplexes, and small apartment buildings, all in many different styles. And often this diversity is what makes a neighborhood interesting and welcoming. My opinion, if this tall, skinny, cramped together, overfilled space of this kind of development becomes the default model, it would not be conducive to an attractive and appealing neighborhood. Looking at some of the photographs and maps and the information that's being submitted in support, I'd like to point out some of the following differences with the examples that have been given. Horner Avenue, for example. Surely Horner is a busy east-west thoroughfare, can't be considered a comparable situation to this microcosm of Enfield. Bosch Avenue, which is a long north-south street with sidewalks and boulevards on both sides. Albright and Burning Game, which are the shortest streets which cut through to Brown's Line. They have sidewalks on south side and boulevards. And so visual inspection and looking at some of the photographs that we didn't identify as precedence for five Enfield have larger side and front setbacks than Enfield. And so, for example, their impact is not at all equal to what the impact of this development would be on the sightlines and the streetscape of Enfield. Variations and variances granted to other developments, in my opinion, do not always have the same detrimental effect. The considerations implied by the terms massing and scale, it seems to me, are of particular relevance to this proposal. And I think that's what we're looking at here. The city planners, as you have noted, have already identified the same major problems that we have and have noted the major cumulative effects of the variances. Finally, I'd simply like to reiterate that we're not opposed to renewal of older neighborhoods. It's not possible to remain static. We know that. But there are many options available for appropriate development while staying within the parameters set out by the planning act and the bylaws without requesting so much variation. Thank you for your time and excuse me for being a little nervous on this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Spence Thomas, for that, that presentation. Let's see if committee members have any questions for you. And if not, we can move on to the next speaker. Okay, the next speaker is Sienna Mochoki of nine Enfield. So looks like first one on the speaker on the same side of the street. Looks like one, one home, one dwelling away.
Yes, we live, yeah, basically dwelling away from the, the proposal.
Yeah, you start by stating your name, please.
Yeah, my, my name is Robert Mahutsky. Me and, and my, my wife Sean and I are in opposition to this. We're at number nine Enfield Ave. Okay. Our, our main, our, part of our concern is the, the, the height. It's being presented as a two-story building, but it's in fact, it's a garage with two floors stacked on top of it. It's, it's, it is for all stated purposes, a three-story building. And another thing is the characteristic of the street of Enfield. Like, we are the southmost street before you get to the, the railroad track that basically split. So there is a, a greater amount of foot traffic on our street than there is on the other streets in the neighborhood. And we can see in the other streets in the neighborhood where houses have been split in this, how the parking on the street, all of this increases. And to the detriment, we have sidewalks. So this will be a detriment to the people. They'll be forced to walk out into the middle of the street. Safety will become an issue. Yeah, and, and Lauren and, and Emma's family have all presented the points very well, which we are also in agreement with. One other thing, I might, I didn't get asked the first speaker from sixty-four question, but like my understanding is this is the applicant's mother. So like, I understand validity of her statement, but there is also a connection there. We are and we are actual close neighbors. The, the, the support person is like around the block. That's, that's it, eh?
Yeah, that's, you know, that, you know, it's, we're, we're mostly affected by this.
One, one, we have one person speaking, please.
So your husband. Yeah, I think we're, we're good. Thank you.
So yeah, I did mention, so it's interesting to know. I'd like to, I'm gonna ask Mr. Chan about that. I was wondering, because I've said that's the only speaker that seems to be located further away, obviously, but the number of letters we have, not everyone is located next door or right in front or right behind because there are a lot of letters, but that's a very, you know, I'm glad, thanks for pointing that out. Anyone have any questions for Robert? I didn't catch your last name. I think you're not listed on the speaker sheet because your wife was. Does anyone have any questions for last speaker at number nine? And if not, let's go back then to Mr. Chan for his rebuttal. And Mr. Chan, you can confirm if there's any relationship with the first speaker at sixty-four.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. That, I'm unaware of that. So I wouldn't be able to answer the first speaker that support was, is related to my client. I wouldn't know.
Okay, so let's, let's have your rebuttal.
Yes, if I could just take us through some of the discussion here. With regards to Plesko with four Enfield, I can appreciate their concern with respect to modifying the streetscape. However, she's bringing up concerns with regards to the media context and when an application like such as this is being considered by the committee or by T-Lab, it's the geographic neighborhood as well as the immediate and broader contexts that are taken into consideration. And therefore, our analysis is based on the geographic neighborhood as well as the analysis in the media context. And we can see that in the immediate context, there are lots that are, that are twenty-five foot less already. There are buildings that are detached buildings in the immediate context. In fact, that forms the prevailing character of the immediate context as well as the broader context. So in this particular instance, there isn't a significant distance to consider that the immediate context should be taken of greater weight over the geography, the rest of the character of the geographic neighborhood. So with respect to the supporting materials in the analysis of the property data maps, I can appreciate that there could be some instances of error, but it is the best information available from the city. And despite that, we also have the committee of adjustment decisions for the geographic neighborhood that also support the more prescriptive and the exact numbers of the side yard setbacks and also the other variances that were applied for in the geographic neighborhood that support that this application is consistent with the decisions that have been made by this committee previously. With respect to Archer's concern, I can appreciate that the number of variances does not constitute whether an application is, is minor or not. It is a consideration of the site-specific details and lot configuration that do produce the variances. I would also like to note with regards to the semi-detached comments by both the city and Ms. Archer in that semi-detached houses in the RMX eighteen exception area are permitted to be eleven meters in height. So if a semi-detached building were to be proposed on this lots, then we can have an increase of another meter and a half above what is being proposed. So massing and scale. There's one additional detached building being proposed in an area that has been noted by all the commenters to be within, within walking distance of the Long Branch Go Station. In the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, that makes this particular site within a major transit station area. It is about a hundred meters, four hundred meter walk. And if you go out the back gate, you can walk down to the Go Long Branch Station. It is an intermodal transit facility wherein the Long Branch TTC Streetcar also terminates at the Go Station Terminal. So this type of gentle intensification in existing established mature neighborhood is completely in line with the provincial growth plan goals in order to provide gentle intensification while respecting and reinforcing the existing physical character of the neighborhood. With respect to Mr. Roberts, sorry, I have trouble pronouncing his last name. With regards to a three-story building, we are not seeking a variance for three stories. We're seeking a variance for a height for a two-story building. We're seeking a variance for a height or a two-story building. It is common to seek variances for height with proposals that have integral garages, as shown in the COA decision chart that has been provided to the committee for their review. So this is consistent with existing and previous approvals in the neighborhood. With respect to traffic and parking concerns, Transportation Services has not provided any opposition to the proposal. And ECS has not noted that there would be any, and Transportation Services has noted that there would not be any uh, undue adverse impacts to the existing traffic and circulation functions of the geographic neighborhood. I'd just like to, uh, finalize my comments. Uh, again, that C2 Planning has completed the study in the neighborhood. So throughout the neighborhood and in the media context, lot sizes are comparable to the proposal. This is especially true for, for a lot of the semi-detached, existing semi-detached dwellings. And in fact, if you can go through the photographic record that we have provided, if you have done so before, you'll notice that many of the, of the dwellings, both detached and semi-detached buildings on twenty-five or foot less frontage lots have small side yards. Even in the semi-detached buildings that exist in the geographic neighborhood, you will notice on the photos that there are side yard setbacks to the exterior side yards of those semi-detached dwellings that are even smaller than, than are proposed.
Yeah, Mr. Chan, can you please wrap up? Thank you.
Great, so thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Chair and committee members. Uh, those are my responses to the, uh, comments of the opposition.
Thank you. Committee members, any questions? For the, either the applicant or any of the neighbors who've spoken, or is someone ready to weigh in with the motion? Is there no further questions?
I think I'm ready to weigh in with a motion. Um, well, I fully appreciate the, uh, the owner's desire to, to build. Uh, I don't believe that this application meets any of the criteria for the four tests. I've gone up and down the street and there are no, uh, building lots that have been severed like this. And I would hate to start a trend on this street. Uh, I, you know, I think, I think, um, see, community planning is asking for refusal and, and there's a reason for it. And, and therefore, I am putting forward a motion for refusal of this application.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Uh, is there a second for that motion? Mr. Taylor? Okay, uh, all in favor? Opposed, I'm opposed, so I will dissent. Motion carries four to one, the application is refused. Okay, thank you, neighbors, and thank you, Mr. Chan. Uh, we'll now move on to the next application, which is item number thirty-five ninety-four Fifth Street. This is again, three in a row and a consent to, uh, obtain consent to sever the lot into two residential lots. Um, and in each event, the lot, the existing dwelling will be demolished on the lot and lots. Two new lots will be developed, a site of new detached dwellings with detached garages requiring variance of the zoning bylaw set out in applications B and C. We have supplemental material, location map, uh, two letters of support from ninety and ninety-six. Uh, in our supplemental materials, we have letters of opposition from one oh one and ninety-one sixth. Urban forestry is requesting conditions two and five. Uh, planning has advised they have no further concerns following revisions that have been made. Uh, and I think we had three variants on each of the, uh, two parts. And that's all we have. Registered to speak on this application is Glenn Rubenoff, the agent, as well as the neighbor at ninety-nine Fifth Street, across the street. Mr. Rubenoff?
Hi, good afternoon. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, this is an application. Um, if you've, um, seen the street, you'll see that most of the lots in the area, many of them are twenty-five foot lots. This is a bit of an anomaly. If you look at the map that we have provided, there's one map that we provided which fills, uh, all of the twenty-five foot lots in the area.
Can we see the supporting materials on the, uh, Mr. Rubenoff's referring to in supporting material? There's a map showing pale yellow and you're showing your property in green.
Yes, and, yeah, so pale yellow are the lots, which are typically twenty-five foot lots, and that's what we're proposing. Uh, we're a fifty-foot lot. Um, so planning really didn't even write a report, they just felt, well, they just asked us to make some adjustments, which we did. And, uh, and then we went forward and, uh, uh, you know, put in, uh, the variances we put in, uh, similar densities approved in the area. Um, overall, I, I, you know, the, the comments from, from transportation were not, you know, inconsequential. They were fine with it. Um, you know, forestry would like to have some trees planted in the front. There's no trees that were, uh, no city trees that were removing. Um, so it's just, uh, putting two driveways in and then putting some plantings in between, uh, which is, uh, again, fairly standard. Um, we have the immediate neighbors on both sides, letters of support from them, uh, which you mentioned earlier. Um, so I don't, I don't want to take up your time, because I feel like it's a pretty straightforward application. And if someone would like to speak, I'm happy to hear what they have to say.
Okay, Mr. Rubenoff, thank you. So let's see if committee members have any questions for you. So this map that disappeared, uh, all of those yellow lots are twenty-five foot lots?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Does anyone have any questions, or we'll move on to hear from, uh, Stefan Raymond, uh, ninety-nine, across the street?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. Stefan will no longer be speaking. We just got ahold of him like five minutes ago.
Okay, so he will no longer be speaking. Uh, we did, so when he wasn't one of the authors of the letter, we have, like I said, ninety, ninety-six to support and the additional materials, one oh one and ninety-one opposed. So there's no other speakers, so let's just see, committee members, any questions? Um, there'll be no need for Mr. Rubenoff to rebut, because there's no one else speaking. If there's no other questions, is someone ready to weigh in with a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think it's, I think it's notable that we have a consent application that doesn't require variances for lot frontage or area. The, the lot pattern, I, I think, while we can see, is very compatible with, uh, the immediate, the immediate context. And I move for, uh, I find the variances meet the four tests under the Planning Act. And I move for approval subject to, I believe, urban forestry conditions one and three.
Yeah, that's what I had.
Which I recall was recent correspondence from them to that effect, so.
It's not two and five? When I looked at the list?
It's, yeah, it's lots. Sorry, it's conditions two and five in the consolidated memo.
Right.
And then there was a, there was a memo dated June third, which I think changed it to conditions one and three.
And that would obviously be the latest, because it's, today's June the third.
Yes.
Uh, can staff assist?
Yeah, it's right here, yes, it's one, it's one and three.
Okay, so that's your motion.
And, and, uh, my, my motion would be subject to the standard conditions of consent as, as well.
Yeah, the ECS. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I have a second for Mr. Taylor's motion. Ms. Alderson, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval? Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rubenoff. Okay, item number thirty-six is, uh, my item was deferred from October, uh, six, two, twenty-twenty. Uh, it's ten Yorkwoods Gate. We have one speaker registered to speak, the agent. And this is an application for to convert the existing office space to residential dwelling units. Um, we have three variances. Uh, the variances to go, uh, I believe there's only one variance, and it's basically from sixty units where it's fifty-four is permitted. Oh, there's three variances, and then the other two are the ancillary structure and the issue about amenity space, it counts, but it didn't count. So there was some discussion about how that really, uh, does comply, that even though that triggered that, this variance is still because it doesn't, it doesn't consider this type of amenity space to be amenity space. Uh, and other than that, we have a condition of approval. Uh, planning would like a letter of credit to cover the landscape works being suggested. Transportation has no objection, subject to the maximum number of, like I said, we have covering letter, we have plans, um, supplemental materials. And, uh, let's hear from the agent, Lance Caprillion.
Good morning, uh, members of committee. Uh, my name is Lance Caprillion, agent for, uh, the owners. Um, that recap was, was very concise. Um, we're, there are two spaces we're converting to units. Um, one of them is an office, one of them is essentially an unused room at the front of the building. So we are achieving two new suites and relocating the existing office elsewhere on the ground floor. Um, the three variances, the one variance relating to the number of suites. There are fifty-eight suites in the building now. We're proposing to add two, which would bring the total to sixty. And there are fifty-four permitted by the, uh, by the zoning. So that is, um, it's simply an increase in density. The second variance relating to the, um, uh, the distance of the, uh, ancillary structure to the street. So that is actually an ancillary structure that we are proposing. Uh, and this was part of the conversation with planning to improve the site. And right now, there are some exposed areas where garbage collects and mattresses and furniture and that type of thing. So for those large items, we are proposing this, uh, enclosure to, to conceal them from the street. Um, and the reason it's located there near the street as opposed to deeper into the building is because, or into the site is because of the access we have to an underground, uh, parking, which is, if you look at the site plan, you'll see it's a little, it's, it's, there's a little bit of a, of a curve to get to it. And we were concerned that by locating this, um, deeper, we would be concealing, uh, we were creating a hazard for drivers. So, uh, we located where it is. There's also a similar structure across the street, so it seemed to, um, to work, at least in that context. Um, and the third, uh, variance relates to amenity space. So in, in these discussions we've had with planning, we were really focused on trying to improve the site, um, both in creating usable space for tenants and also in beautifying the building context. It's quite a large site. Um, and that variance continues to exist, as the chairman pointed out, because the, the way that the, the bylaws written, exterior amenity doesn't count unless it's adjacent to interior amenity. So while we've created exterior amenity, it continues to be a variance, simply because there is no interior amenity, uh, to which it's adjacent and, and, um, so we have that variance. Uh, and we feel these are relatively minor variance, given what we're achieving and having two extra suites, uh, for this, for this building.
Okay. There you, uh, that's all you want to say at this time?
Um, yes, I, I mean, there's, in addition to this site plan, we've included a, a landscape plan. We have no objection whatsoever to the conditions planning, the condition planning is placed on that. Um, we've, we've been in this discussion with them for a while, back and forth, so we're committed to doing this and, um, and getting it right, so we're happy with, uh, with, with that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so like I said, there are no other speakers on this, uh, application. Committee members, any questions, uh, for the agent, or is someone ready for a motion? Ms. Alderson?
I have a question. Um, I noted, uh, on the site that there is a rather unattractive chain link fence around the entire property. Is that, is that being considered to be torn down at all as part of this landscape plan, or no?
We, no, it isn't part of that plan, no.
Okay, is that a typical thing, uh, on, uh, on Yorkwoods Gate? That there would be a lot of chain link fences around properties like that, like?
You know, I, it's, it's so difficult, because we were trying to do something really lovely and also trying to make it, um, I guess, make sure that it was accessible only to tenants and wouldn't become a place where, uh, other people would hang out and produce a more menacing environment for the tenants. So
Okay.
We're trying to balance those two things and, and leaving the fence around the outside seemed like it was maybe not a bad idea, given that.
Just wondered if it was part of the new landscaping plan, that's all.
Oh, no, no.
Okay, is, uh, any more questions, or is someone ready for a motion on these, uh, three variances?
A quick question, uh, the elevation four point zero one, um, that glazing at the front, that's where the proposed, uh, conversion is going to be?
That's correct, yes.
So those bachelor, those bachelor units will have access to the outside through those, uh, are those, uh, openable glass, uh?
They will be. Uh, so, it, it, they're, they're, right now, it's floor-to-ceiling glass, wall-to-wall glass. It's a little bit, it's a little bit too much light, perhaps, too much exposure. So we will be, um, uh, modifying that a bit, and yes, there will be operable windows. And the, the exposure to light is excellent, it's excellent.
Okay, so I'm, I'm ready to make a motion if, uh, other members do not have any questions.
Go ahead.
I find that, uh, this proposal is an improvement to the whole condition of the streetscape, as well as the bachelor, it's our very nice units. And I move up for approval, uh, conditional transportation and forestry, are there two conditions on this one?
Uh, is there forestry?
I thought I saw forestry, maybe not? Maybe not.
See it, I didn't see it, I don't have it noted.
No, okay, but just transportation, I believe?
Thank you.
No, there's a condition on landscaping, a landscaping plan.
Sorry, that's what I meant to say.
Community planning.
It's planning, and thanks for clarifying that, Laura, planning and, and transportation, thank you.
Right, the, the planning was, uh, posting an LC for Landscape Works.
Happy to second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, our next application is thirty-seven twenty Louisa. This matter was before the committee, May twentieth, at which time was deferred to correct, uh, the zoning notice. Uh, notice has been resent. Uh, it's an application for, uh, to construct a third floor addition. The existing residential unit in the basement will be relocated to the proposed third floor, and the existing six residential units will be maintained. There are, uh, nine variances. Um, we have planning, uh, has condition of approval, uh, transportation. Uh, just advising of the implications of the zoning review, uh, waiver advising the applicant that they're responsible for any zoning compliance issues, because they did a waiver. And we have a site-specific zoning bylaw. We have two, uh, we have applicant submissions and we have, uh, opposition, uh, two letters of opposition. Now I would believe in our, and in our, I believe all the letters are from six, from sixteen. We have one in the additional materials, one in the regular package. So we have that party opposed, we have registered to speak. The agent, Christine, Christian Chan, from one fifty-seven for the agent, as well as the, uh, the, the homeowner, it looks like, available to speak, uh, as well as the neighbor from twenty who's written in with the letters. So we have really one speaker in opposition, which is, oh, sorry, that is actually, we have the speaker from sixteen who's written in in opposition, and we also have the tenant of twenty of, uh, Louisa, uh, registered to speak. So let's hear from the agent, Chris, Christian Chan.
Uh, good afternoon again, uh, Mr. Chair and committee members. Christian Chan of C2 Planning, uh, the agent in line news planner on behalf of the applicant two zero zero two oh nine four Ontario, Inc., owners of twenty Louisa Street. So this is an application to, uh, I've been explaining it to many people, jenga-ing the basement unit onto the top of the existing building to propose a third story. We have had multiple consultation and discussions with city staff that has resulted in adjustments, namely a reduction in height to the height variance, that's the, uh, reason for the, the waiver. Um, and also, uh, proposed landscaping improvements that are also requested by community planning. So I'd like to ask staff to pull up community planning's report and go to page four of that report. So city planning staff. So city planning staff recommend that the committee of adjustment approve the application subject to six conditions that are provided on page four and five. The applicant is more than happy to agree to those conditions. And one of them is, is with respect to the submission of an application for rental housing demolition because of the removal of the existing one bedroom unit in the basement to put it onto the top of the building with a three bedroom unit. So in this situation, a rental housing demolition permit is required. So that will be, that is being done concurrently with this committee of adjustment application and will be applied for. So this proposal is for, to alter the existing two story apartment building by converting one of the existing below grade dwelling units into amenity areas for the residents and then placing the replacement apartment on top of the building. So the existing, the five existing two bedroom units will not be affected by the proposal. The intended use of the space that will be vacated by the one bedroom unit will be a laundry room and folding table laundry storage for the existing residence. So it's an improvement for the internal amenity on the site for the, for the apartment residents. So with regard to the variances, the subject site is an existing legal nonconforming residential building containing six dwelling units. This is proposed to be maintained. This has been a use that's been in existence for more than fifty years. And the media context are also small apartment buildings nineteen Louisa across the street. The proposed FSI at one point one seven is because of the addition, the third floor addition. And it's representative of the three bedroom unit that is proposed on the third floor. The, the proposed front yard setback is the existing front yard setback. So it's a technical variance and that, the creation of the third story triggers this variance. The same as, this, this is similar for variance number four with regards to the required side yard setback. The proposed third story is triggering the variance. And the proposed height is ten point nine four meters, which, which was reduced from above eleven meters in discussions with city planning staff to their satisfaction. And that's the number that they recommended us to revise proposal to, in which we said yes. So the existing height of the rooftop is nine point seven five, so then the proposal will add one point one nine meters of, onto the existing building. So the soft landscaping, or sorry, variance number six for landscaping is the existing landscaping, which has been discussed with the city and which will be improved as part of the submitted landscape plan in support of this application, which has been agreed to by city staff and the applicant. And this is also with regards to variance number seven for the portion of the lot that is required to maintain a soft landscaping. So the required accessible parking space variance is because we are maintaining where the existing accessible parking spaces are located and do not propose to change that condition. And that, that's the same for variance number nine. It's an existing condition and is proposed to be maintained. So in our opinion, the proposal, as outlined in our report on page five and six, meets the four tests pursuant to section forty five one of the act. And respectfully submit to the committee that the proposal should be approved subject to the conditions requested by community planning. And also note that transportation services is commented. And we will, didn't provide any comments, as you said, they reviewed, reviewed it and their previous comments still apply. And there are no forestry conditions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chan. So I did say, we do have two letters of opposition, one was from twenty six as well as from sixteen. And I guess we do have the speaker from sixteen, Brian Chan, I guess no relation, who's written those letters. So unless, does anyone have any questions at this point though for the agent before we move on to hear from the neighbors? Okay, okay, so let's hear from Brian Chan at sixteen Louisa and we have his letter.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair and committee members. Sorry if I'm not as professional, Christian is not no relation, but appreciate his well spoken presentation. So representing myself as the homeowner of twenty Louisa Street, as well as my wife, Jen Netch and Espiral Chan, we adamantly oppose the proposal. The variance on the zoning bylaws, especially in particular item number five, we believe does not meet the four test criteria. And the extension and enlargement does substantially increase the usability of property and does affect adversely affect the surrounding properties, in particular ours as well. The reason for it is because when you look at the neighboring properties and up and down the street and, and beyond as well, we have a relatively uniform roof line. I mean, when you look at even beyond, the condominiums that have gone up is, has been exponential, if you, if you understand the Hamburg Bay shores area. So there's been significant development, understood. But, you know, if we continue to erode on the bylaws that have been set there to protect the, the neighborhood, this is only going to just get worse. I submitted some photos for your, for your digestion. It's, there's several photos that are provided of the street view of our property, as well as the neighboring property. Both from the front, there's a couple of pictures from the front view and as well from the rear view. Just going to show that there is uniformity in the properties up and down the street. You know, and, and to a greater extent, want to, you know, share the impact of a third story up to that height. I know it's not always about the stories, but it is about the height. And the height is by no means minor. So that's the variance of item number five, which is significant in our opinion. So if you can understand and, and, and see that, you know, our residence has not just become our residence, but is becoming our primary location for work and home. Both myself and my wife, we work from home now because of the COVID pandemic. And that actually, the impacts of that is actually more long stated. It's, it's, it's for the foreseeable future of probably the long term future that we will be, this will be our primary area of work. In addition, our children have been, you know, in virtual learning and since the beginning of pandemic. And that is probably going to continue. So the impact of that is mainly attributed to the amount of natural sunlight and, and the skyline that we would have exposure to. In our house, and we are semi attached house, we only have the one main window that feeds the main area where we all work and and, 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 so there it is. Thank you very much. We have the only one main area window that supplies natural sunlight to ourselves. You know, the completed structure, you're going to further raise the roof line on our neighboring structure. And it's going to impose greatly on the, the ability of our, of our residents to have access to natural light. And let's not even go into the fact that what if approved, all the construction that's going to happen is going to greatly impact, you know, our, our regular day to day work and educational activities. So, so there's several reasons why we feel that this is definitely going to impact our, our area. To hear that we are, the intent is to close, clear out the basement or below grade level for amenities such as washer, laundry wash. I mean, I applaud that, but the fact of the matter is, is that most of the units I, are surrounding duplex or apartment rental units probably do not have that. And people get by well enough. There is a coin wash laundry just down the street. And these days there are, you know, units, small units, people can buy within their unit to wash their clothes within the units that they have existing condos have it all the time. So I don't understand why we would allow a precedent. I understand that nineteen Louisa has provided that. And to be honest, we would have opposed that too, if we were even provided an opportunity to oppose that. We were not given a notice of when that had been on the table to, to discuss. And definitely the first time we saw it was when they broke ground and started doing this construction. So again, you know, there is sufficient amenities within the community to support what the homeowner wants to provide for their tenants. And there are also sufficient alternatives to provide that. Don't think that's enough of a justification.
Yeah, Matt, can we please wrap up, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so again, absolutely. Okay, so I made my point and hopefully that is of consideration. If not, we're prepared to go forward with the appeal process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chan. Any questions for Mr. Chan before we move on to the next speaker, who is Benny Van Velson, the tenant, a tenant at twenty Louisa. The C two property. No questions? Okay, Mr. Van Velson.
Hi, actually, it's Ms. Van Velson, a common misconception. I just wanted to address something.
Can we just get your first name then for the record?
It's Benny, B E N N Y.
Okay, we have that. Okay, so you're, you're, okay, you're Benny?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. So let us know what your concerns are.
Okay, so just to right off the bat, I guess the impression is that there is no existing laundry in the building or storage in the amenities that the landlord wants to do. There is already a laundry in the basement, plus storage and, and heating and electrical, et cetera. It already exists. So I'm just going to read you something that I wrote. So I'm a tenant at twenty Louisa and I'm in unit one, which is under discussion partly. I want to clarify some information on the application and notice a public hearing. The notice reads, to construct a third floor addition, the existing residential unit in the basement will be relocated to the proposed third floor and the existing six residential units will be maintained. It implies that there is only one unit in the basement where there are actually two. Unit one, where I live, is not going to be relocated to any location at all and not to the third floor, as it says. My unit will be put to a different use. It'll be replaced and demolished to make way for the larger laundry room, more storage and a common area in the basement. For that, my unit will be eliminated. Presumably the other basement unit will stay in place. And even if a third story is approved, the demo of unit one is not necessary. The city of Toronto has been working hard to maintain the, the, the current affordable housing stock. City committees have been formed to achieve the same. Land use guidelines refer constantly to protecting the affordable housing stock and securing new affordable housing. Meanwhile, the landlords of said affordable housing stock are applying to committees such as this one to start gaining the permissions needed to eliminate that affordable housing by renovating or demolishing that existing housing and replacing it with housing that is not affordable to the original rental population. The permissions granted for renovating and demolishing those affordable units consequently leads directly to the eviction of existing tenants who need that affordable housing. Permissions to go ahead with these renos or demo projects cannot be separated from the very human cost, the resulting consequence that the tenants will be thrust into a rental market that is definitely not affordable to that population. And further, granting permissions and approving these projects are directly responsible for creating that unaffordable housing stock. The landlord's main purpose is generally to take advantage of that rising rental scenario by doing what's necessary to evict and re rent at a much higher price, even double the pre rental price in order to make more money. This is what's called rent eviction and it's a destructive trend that's eating away all the affordable housing. And it's displacing hundreds, if not thousands of people. This is especially prevalent in South Etobicoke Lake Shore where this address is. The cycle has to stop. It has created a crisis of epic proportions. Committees and panels and departments who give the go ahead to the landlord to do this profoundly contribute to the crisis by giving permissions to allow it to happen. The cycle starts or stops right here today. Sorry, because my unit will no longer exist, I will lose first right of refusal. And there won't be another unit that I can move into because my unit is a one bedroom where all the others are and will still be two bedrooms, plus the proposed three bedroom unit on the new top floor. So I don't even have that safety net. I have to let you know that I'm frankly terrified of what comes next for me. I've been looking for the last year or so when George, the landlord, let me know he wanted to do this. There's no housing at the price I can afford. I'm on O D S P and C P P disability, which is under fifteen hundred dollars a month. I could and do still manage my rent as it now stands, just under a thousand. But the average rent for a one bedroom in Toronto is seventeen hundred, even Thunder Bay is nine hundred and seventy two. Anyone can Google on Kijiji or, or any rental site and look for an apartment in Toronto for a thousand dollars or less. And the result will be zero. I might be able to rent a single bed in a, in a, in a, like a single bedroom in a multi bedroom apartment for a thousand dollars, but probably in a basement. And I would have to get rid of virtually everything I own. I wouldn't even be able to put things in storage because it's too expensive. So I'm very afraid. Where am I going to go? And I wonder what will happen to me. I'm a single woman approaching her senior years and everyone I know and love is in Toronto. It's important in these years to feel secure and I'm on many waiting lists for all types of housing.
Yeah, Matt, can you try to wrap up, please, because you're at five minutes? Thank you.
Um, okay, so. Well, I don't think I was at five minutes, but, so I just want, want to say, you know, we need to stop the cycle. And I would like you, please, to consider this human cost, the toll on the people who live here now and just where will we go? What can we do? And just please stop the buck here. Thank you very much for hearing me today.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Van Velson? And if not, I guess we'll move back to Mr. Christian Chan, the agent, to rebut and respond to the issues raised by the two neighbors.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members. So I'd just like to, to request staff to bring up the city's public notice, namely the, the map that was provided as part of the circulation to the neighbors, please. And I'd just like to note that although the increase in height is being proposed for this application, which I understand is, is kind of the crux of what the opposition is from Mr. Chan, is that I'd like to take a note, if you could just, e- even, even the survey would be good if that's easier to bring up. Thank you. So what we can see here, if you can zoom into the property, is that we, 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 yes, there is proposal for an increase in height above one point one nine meters over the existing. We have discussed this height variance. This was also the crux of the discussion with community planning staff along with the landscaping. And we did reduce the height according to community planning's concerns to what they suggested to us at a ten point nine four meters. And that wasn't something that we negotiated with the community planning staff. That was in fact their suggestions for the reduction in that variance. And if staff can zoom in a bit closer to show the side yard conditions between the two buildings of number sixteen and number twenty. I'd like to note that the minimum side yard setback as provided for the R M exception zone here is, is zero point nine meters for a setback. So we can see here that the existing side yard setback to the southeast is being maintained at four point oh one meters. So in fact, we're more than four times the required side yard setback. And on top of that, the existing building up to number sixteen has a two point seven six meter setback. So in combination, we have a six point seven seven meter setback, which is well over seven times the required side yard setbacks for, or, or building separation. Now, when we have a building separation of six point seven six meters, I'd like to turn the committee's attention to, I don't have it before you, but the low rise apartment and townhouse guidelines of the city of Toronto for any height up to a second story or third story building, a five point five meters building separation distance. And that's for a facing condition is recommended. So we're, we're even beyond what the urban design guidelines recommend for low rise apartment conditions, which this definitely would be classified as as a six unit low rise apartment building. So we have a six point seven six meter facing distance and I would submit to the committee that yes, we are seeking an increased height. However, there is no side yard setback that's being reduced that would otherwise, in my opinion, and that would otherwise provide increased height impacts with respect to height and proximity of the building faces to each other. With respect to also heightened in the number of stories, the current roof lines in the geographic neighborhood and in the media context differs dwellings on Louisa Street range from one to three stories in height. The current height is nine point seven five meters. Again, we're adding one point nine, one point one nine meters to the existing height. The current height is 9.75 meters. Again, we're adding 1.9, 1.19 meters to the existing height. And with respect to the construction concerns, as the committee may be well aware, is that all developments are required. Well, there's, there's construction activity on any development, and of course, construction activity i- is, is, is an issue that is not before the committee, but will, as I'd like to note to allay Mr. Chan's concerns, is that any construction activity will follow protocol set out in the city's bylaws and will be enforced by Toronto buildings. With respect to Benny's concern, yes, the proposal is to remove the, her existing unit and to put it onto the third floor. I, I am very sympathetic to her, her concerns with regards to costs. And I do note that under chapter 667 of the municipal code with respect to the rental demolition and conversion by law, there are very strict policies, as also provided in the housing policies in the official plan, that will address all of her concerns in which the applicant owner must subscribe to as a result of our deliberations in the application for rental housing and demolition control with the Housing Secretariat. So a lot of her issues, although I am sympathetic, they aren't discussed, they aren't about discussing the variances before the committee. However, her concerns will be adequately addressed, and she has more than an opportune time to also just have this discussion with the Housing Secretariat once that separate permitting process gets underway.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chan. Just about five minutes in any case. Any follow-up questions for either the agent or any of the speakers, or is someone ready to weigh in with a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, in my observation, the only difference between what is proposed and what exists on this property is height. Variance five, as Mr. Chan pointed out, the height of the existing building is 9.75 meters. So they're only proposing to exceed that by 1.19 meters, which is less than four feet. So collectively and individually, I find the variances to meet the four tests under the Planning Act. And I move for approval subject to the Community Planning Department conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. A second for Mr. Taylor's motion.
All second.
Thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous, unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Chan. Thank you, neighbors. Okay, our next application is item number 3841 Thompson Avenue. It's to construct a new two-story rear addition, a new covered front porch, and a one-story front addition to the existing garage and a new covered deck. There are only two variances. This is a application was deferred from the November 5th, 2020 meeting, almost seven months ago, at which time was the only time I'd seen that happen. We had a stalemate after an hour hearing. And so we had to defer, and it looks like that was a new detached house. It looks like more or less it was massive, massive opposition. We heard, we spent over an hour hearing it. So it looks like they've now re-characterized this as a additions, and it looks like there's at least very little, if maybe no, opposition. Registered to speak, Michael Flynn, the agent, and Mr. Rob Scholl from 48 Thompson. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Michael Flynn. Well, as you noted, there's been some major changes in this. One of the major changes is that the, is that the ownership has changed. The new owner and myself have spent a great deal of time with the local community association referred to as TOCA and individual members, and also with Planning Department, and made significant changes that, as you stated, have resulted in, I have this as three variances, not two. But we received a zoning notice today just prior to noon from the city to confirm what we were saying. So if I can just review, we have two current objectives. One is from across the street. Their concern was massing, and one is from two streets away, which is more just an issue of should variances ever be allowed, I'd say.
Okay, so, Mr. Flynn, can I just interrupt? Because I guess in my introduction, I didn't, I omitted to mention that planning advised they have no further concerns. And again, I was not aware, unless I missed it in the supplemental package, and it's not the first time today, that we see a revised notice, as you put on the board now, eliminating certain variances and reducing others that, as you say, just came in at noon. So I haven't seen that. I don't know if the other members have seen that as well. So we now.
Well, every.
So we now only have three variances.
Well, if you look at the, sorry, if you look at the public notice, I can go through the individual variances, correct?
Well, we see that up on the board, aside from my, maybe we can expand it a little more so I could see it, but you've, you've taken out two of the variances and, and reduced.
Correct.
Three, so we can see that. We weren't aware of that before that just came up on the board. So that's.
Okay, so every variance has been affected.
But I understand community planning had already sent a memo before these changes, to my information, stating that they had no further concerns.
That's correct, because they were aware of the changes, and I made the changes on a waiver. That waiver has now been confirmed by this new public here, uh, sorry, the new zoning notice that arrived today. So we are now on a zoning notice, not a waiver. It's just unfortunate that the city staff didn't have an opportunity to put out a revised notice to the public. And I'm fairly sure that's why the other speaker is here, is to make sure that we live up to our commitment. So if I can do this really quickly for you, item number one has been reduced to 33.6%. So you're allowed 33, and we are at .6. Item number two, the FSI has been reduced to .658 with a gross floor area of 256.75. That's a further reduction of another 10 square meters. Item number three is the side yard setbacks, and it relates to the front, I believe, the south corner. And it has only to do with the facade of the house to, to improve its compatibility with the neighborhood. And it now has an aggregate of 1.93 meters as opposed to the 1.6 that was there. Item number four and five are both deleted. So that was height, a front and rear exterior walls has been deleted, and the roof eaves encroachment has been deleted. So what we have is, we have six letters of support. TOCA has put in a letter saying that they are not opposing the application. We have the email from Planning Department saying that they have no concerns. There are no transportation comments, no forestry conditions, and we believe that this application now meets the four tests. And that we would ask for your approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flynn. We have a big distance from when this was, I believe, originally a new house, new build at .73, so.
Yes, you are right.
Objection. So we now still have to hear from two people who at least are here, at least dated May 25th, at least objecting to the iteration before these highlighted changes, and we'll hear from them whether they still have concerns, as they're entitled to. And we'll hear what their concerns are, should they still have some after these latest changes. And then, does anyone have any questions, though, for Mr. Flynn before we do that? Okay, if there's none, let's move on to Rob Scholl at 48 Thompson, who perhaps is just here to make sure that these last changes got implemented. So, Mr. Scholl.
Hi, good afternoon, Rob Scholl. I live at 48 Thompson across from the proposed development. Mr. Flynn has accurately stated my, my presence here was largely just to make sure that all of the revised zoning notices came through and that the, the plans that he's been discussing with myself and with the, the rest of the TOCA board are, in fact, the plans that are up for approval today, and I'm happy to report they are. Certainly want to acknowledge the work that Mr. Flynn and the new owners have put in, in working with our community and our group to make this a, a bill that's, that's satisfactory to the majority of the neighbors, as our TOCA letter does indicate. The FSI of .658 is, is definitely pushing sort of what we consider to be that acceptable range. However, they've taken great, great lengths to, they've gone through great lengths to, to work with us to, to bring down the other variances and reduce this to effectively a small list of variances, some of which are quite minor, FSI being the only one on the table. So I have really nothing further to add. I appreciate the committee's time and effort on this as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scholl. Any need for, any questions for Mr. Scholl? No? Okay, and Mr. Flynn, I don't know if there's any need to rebut what Mr. Scholl had to say.
I agree with him.
So let's just see if committee members have any questions or someone's ready to weigh in with a motion.
Benny Bellisimo is ready to weigh in with a motion. One clarification, this waiver, I don't see a date on it. Do we have to make reference to a date? I, I can't see the date on it on the screen.
Sure there is. Hold on one moment.
Or do, or is it satisfactory just to say the revised waiver as submitted to the committee? Staff?
That could be sufficient. The new zoning notice is dated today, the third. So that is now the current.
I just wanted staff to comment on that, please. Do we need to date or just say as submitted to the committee?
For you, Mr. Chair, the zoning waiver that was submitted today is dated June 3rd. We have it. Staff can put it back up on the screen so that we can all see it.
June 3rd. Well, then my, my motion is to approve the waiver dated June 3rd with the three, three variances.
Wouldn't mean the waiver. You mean the notice. You mean the, the notice with the, with the yellow highlighting is what we're approving. That's.
Yeah, isn't that the waiver? Sorry.
I guess Mr. Bellisimo just wants to rightly confirm that when we approve the application, we're approving.
That's right.
What's up on the board here, one, two, and three, not four and five, and the highlighted changes, because.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The application's been amended by the applicant in accordance with the revision sheet, which corresponds with the zoning waiver that was submitted today, so that the variances before you, as amended, are one, two, and three as highlighted.
Correct.
Thank you.
We make reference in our motions or approvals to zoning waivers, just to the notice.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to know what this, but, thank you.
Thank you. Seconded for Mr. Bellisimo's motion.
Happy to second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? And it looks like we have unanimous, provided Neil Palmer's in favor, because he's not up on the screen. Neil, you're okay? Thank you. There you are. Okay. Nice, nice to see that one resolved. It did take a new owner, I guess. Maybe it wouldn't have been as simple, but new owners always put a fresh lookout on things. Okay, our next application is 3948 Gort Avenue. This matter was deferred from the February 9th, 2021 hearing. It's an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are six variances, five letters of support, two letters of opposition from 54 and 44 Gorts. Yeah, it was deferred back in February to consult and revise. And present on this application, we have Nafisa Zanghiabadi, the agent, and that's all we have, only one speaker.
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Hello.
This is Nafisa Zanghiabadi, 30 Apple Road, short path, Thornhill, Ontario, L3T3B6. And I'm the applicant on this project. As you mentioned, it's an application to construct a new two-story dwelling and was originally submitted in October 2020 and scheduled for a hearing on February 2021. But at that time, staff weren't satisfied with the variances that were proposed, and part of that was due in part to the fact that this property is located in the area which the prevailing Etobicoque bylaw applies. And the way the notice was interpreted, interpreted and written by the examiner was quite different from the usual notices, and we had to have a couple of meetings with the zoning examiner, zoning manager, and planning staff. And at some point, we had to even change the examiner to a more experienced one. So finally, we, with the few meetings with them, we managed to revise the drawings in a way that's to comply with whatever is approved in the neighborhood and satisfactory for the staff, and also very close to what is permitted and prevailing Etobicoque bylaw. As you see, we have basically major three variances. Three of them are related to the height, which main wall height is only one foot above what is permitted. Item five and six are on the prevailing bylaw. And whereas in the new Etobicoque bylaw, which the permitted height is 9.5 meter, we are complying with that. So basically, keeping that in mind means that we're actually shorter than other houses in the neighborhood who are a bit higher than the permitted nine and a half meter new bylaw height requirement. And there's also the variance of coverage, which is only 1% more than what is permitted, and as a result, the GFA .66, which is compatible with what is being approved in the area. And we're just aligned with our neighbors in terms of the massing. And the setback, we comply on one side, and the other side, we had to go a little bit for a variance because the lots is narrow lot, and we had to make sure that we have enough space for one car garage in the hallways and whatever spaces that they're proposing. So we're satisfied, and we have support from our neighbors, and I think this application is quite minor in nature.
Okay, thank you. Committee members, any questions for the agents?
I have a question. You made reference to other houses of similar heights in the neighborhood. Do you happen to know the house directly across the street from you at number 47? Do you happen to know the height of that home? It's a new home.
That one, but I had, I myself had a few projects in the neighborhood which significantly higher height than this project, and they were approved. And I can give you the addresses. It was actually exactly on Gort Avenue, 74B, 74C. And there was another one on Alderbury Avenue, 58 Alderbury. And so these are the four projects that I personally work on, and.
So based on that, I would gather that number 47 is a little shorter than what you're proposing. Because it would seem logical that you would have that number.
Yes, exactly, it's shorter, because number seven. Yeah, we are 9.5 exactly at the top, but the other one that I mentioned, there are almost 9.80 or 9.85, so at least a foot, hardly 48.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I, I see, I guess, variances five and six, well, those are under the old bylaw. And you see that, I see that the height performance standard is different under the bylaw. You're at 8.75 under the old bylaw to the midpoint. But under the new bylaw, you're at 7.85 on the main wall height, side exterior main wall. That's the only variance for height. Okay, any further questions for the agent, or is someone ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I find the variances requested satisfy the four tests under the Planning Act, and I move approval with no conditions.
Thank you. Seconded for Mr. Taylor's motion. Mr. Bellisimo, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you. Okay, the application is approved without conditions. Okay. Next application is item number 40, 10 Nordell Crescent. This is an application, again, was deferred from the March 23rd, 2021 hearing. It's an application to convert the existing attached garage into a new carport and to construct a new garage attached to the existing shed in the rear yard. And there are two variances, and we have correspondence. We have material from the. We have material from the previous hearing and um. I believe that's all we have here. The speaker on this item is uh, Marco Viera. Mr. Viera.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Marco Viera. I'm at two five seven Dunraven Drive and I'm the agent and the designer for this application.
Okay, thank you. Uh, don't think we necessarily need a uh, presentation on this. Can you just let us what ha- what happened, I guess, did we why it was deferred and what's happened since? Has the application changed at all?
No, the, the application in essence has not changed. It was the numerical value given to the area of the garage and the lot coverage that did not match. When we had the latest zoning notice, um, it didn't match the um, notice of hearing that was sent out, so we had to defer to have that corrected.
Okay, so your two variances are the floor area slightly over three meters over. The total floor area of the shed and detached garage, detached garage and your other variance is the coverage, including the shed and garage. Committee members, any questions for Mr. Viera about the two variances or uh, someone ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I find the variances requested meet the four tests under the planning act. And I move approval without conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Second for that motion. Ms. Alderson. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Viera. Okay, and uh, we can now move on to our last application of the uh, afternoon as number forty two has been deferred. So item number forty one is one thirty six Fourth Street. It's an application to convert the existing dwelling into a duplex dwelling. To construct a two story rear addition, a front basement walkout, a rear yard deck and a detached garage in the rear yard. There are three variances. Uh, there is a floor space index and then a uh. The encroachment of the platform into the front yard setback. And the distance to north side setback and also then the maximum permitted lot coverage of an accessory structure being ten. In this case, the detached garage will cover fourteen point five three. On this application, we have. Um. Applicant submission. And we have a planning report that recommends we refuse. Not the entire application, but only the major variance. The proposed floor space index. Uh, again, and whenever this comes up, I caution members that we are here to approve applications and not variances. And as Mr. uh, Palmer established uh, in another hearing. Uh, the situation would be that we would be approving two other. Uh. Uh, minor variances, uh, independent of the. One major one which couldn't happen. And you'd be granting two variances just out of context. Uh, so. We keep getting these reports and I feel I have to keep pointing out to members that we're not supposed to be. Uh, that it would be a mistake to. Deny rather than give a reduced floor space index. And just ref- if you wanted to do that, we have to refuse the entire application. So the agent Ian Cunha, and I'll ask Mr. Cunha if he agrees with my uh, whether he could actually proceed with that variance one. Mr. Cunha, welcome.
Uh, good afternoon, Ian Cunha, representing the owners of one thirty six Fourth Street. So. I've been discussing uh, this project with the planning staff.
Yeah.
For months now. And. We adjourned uh, the last time so that I could sit down with them, because I did have nine variances at that time and I understood. That maybe we were pushing the envelope a little bit more than we should. And we've been able to go uh, back and forth in reducing uh, variances to the point that we have three before you. And these three are actually. You know, variances that are based, one is based on the garage, one based on the porch at the front. And actually, one variance, which is a force base index, that actually is based on the house. Now, even at this. Force base index that we're requesting. The total square footage of this house is two thousand and nineteen square feet. And I've explained to planning that by reducing this. To below two thousand square feet, it's almost impossible to be able to put a, a, a house together with at least three bedrooms. For the family to, to use. Um. And yeah, i- if, if for, for some reason this committee decided to uh, not grant the force base index. It's basically, I would say. Yes, exactly. So. My clients and I, we have done everything possible. To reduce. The number of variances. Just so that the planning staff would be able to look at this one variance. Look not just at the, at the. At the percentage, but actually look at the size that we're talking about. It's two thousand and nineteen square feet. So. I am asking this committee to look at the square footage of this house, not necessarily the, the, the index. Um, this is um, a neighborhood that's in transition. There's a variety of building types. Uh, there's bungalows, there's two story homes, there's a multi-unit low rise building at one twenty one. One twenty was just severed and two houses were put on it. So. For us to. To reduce this to less than two thousand square feet would just be really. It's a, would be a deal breaker. These people would basically be devastated.
Okay. Um. One thing I have a big problem with, again, this is a pattern and only with, I'm, I, I, I believe I want to make a formal request that this matter be brought to the chief planner. Because the planner was good enough to go through all of the variants you removed. Was, still wasn't satisfied at point six out, eight, but to recommend a refusal and not say, as we've seen. Maybe six four, maybe six, maybe five, but just to refuse it is in disingenuous and punitive. And that's my opinion. So um, it's late in the day and this is, this app, these applications. Community planning, if you wish to refu- if you agree with the planner's recommendation, then we have to refuse the whole application. But for this planner to not recommend a. Whatever this planner felt was, is appropriate, point six, point five eight, but just to refuse it is to me inappropriate. Um, so any questions for Mr. Cunha? And if not, is someone ready to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I believe this is a reasonably sized uh, proposed house. Uh, that doesn't require very much by way of yard adjustments. And I find it in keeping with the four tests. And I move approval without conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I have a second for Mr. Taylor's motion. Thank you, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? Okay, my application is approved unanimously and we are actually adjourned. I want to thank everyone.
Thank you.
For a great hearing, the members and especially the staff and moderator. Who do the greatest job in keeping us all uh, all together. Okay, thank you and we'll see you next time. We stand.
See you later.